I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Claudia Holmes, President. Bob Nelson.
Here.
Martin Meyer.
Here.
Carleen Kane.
Here.
Sam Powers.
President.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Caroline Swartzenbach.
Here.
Skylar Wester.
Here. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a court. Again, I'd ask, as we approach the adoption of agenda, that if anyone does have a conflict of interest on any of the items on the agenda, make that known to the body. Also, I would ask for an amended agenda, that we would add an executive session just prior to new business for legal matters. I will accept a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda with an executive session before new business.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we have amended agenda. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The amended agenda is approved. You also have in your packets the minutes from the October 2nd council meeting. I accept a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from the October 2nd meeting.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Approve the minutes.
I didn't get the second. I heard a few mumbles. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
So, we do have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the October 2nd council meeting. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have before you the bills in between. Accept a motion to accept the bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Approve the bills in between. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You also have in your packages current claims. Accept the motion to approve the current claims at this time.
Jordan, there's a change. We're going to note the changes.
Okay, so, thank you, Misty, for pointing that out. If you could summarize those for us, Misty, please.
I can have you. There was a decrease in your claims of $3,180. So, the total current claims are $51,404.66. The change is resolved of the change in payment to Black Hills and Badlands Tourism on page three. The second one, the previous total was $4,773. Further review of the bill showed that they were expecting a 25% down payment on the $4,240 and not full payment. So, that was decreased to $1,060. That's for a full-page ad in the 2018 South Florida Vacation Guide. So, the down payment of $1,060 replaced the full payment of $4,240. That was my question. Very good.
Okay, we then, I would ask for a motion to accept the corrected current claims. Thanks, Misty, for getting that.
Motion to approve the corrected current claims.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the corrected current claims. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion?
I had that question because it looked like we were paying $16,000.
It's when I looked at the rest.
And so, and then also that we are getting reimbursement on the free radars. Is that right?
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent.
Yeah. This is the first, not the most recent grant that you approved of this one of the Black Hills Act. So, there's a temporary decision. They had waited until after the one.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the corrected current claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on in our agenda, the communications from the public. Is Judy here?
I don't see her here. May I?
Okay. I know that she had wanted to talk to the council about distributing winter apparel to those that need, perhaps would need winter apparel. And I think the plan was to leave those gloves, hats, scarves, mittens, and sort of things, for example, on the fence there by the American Legion, so that if anyone did need something, they could have access to that. I was a little bit confused when I first saw the request. I thought it might be as a decoration.
Is it similar to the one in Rapid Valley, they put on the statues?
Yes, it is. Yes. So, if Judy does show up, we'll let her go ahead and also explain it in much more accurate detail than I did. Keep in mind, we do have a public hearing at 7:10. I'll move on to personnel. We have items A through E. I'd accept a motion to approve those personnel actions.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel actions A through B.
Second, Sam.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those personnel actions A through E. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll continue on with the committee reports until 7:10. Administrative and Finance, Carol Anne.
We didn't have a meeting, but we'll meet on 11/6 at one meeting at City Hall.
Airport Advisory Committee, Jordan Taylor.
We didn't meet either. So, thanks, Kathy.
Custer Falls River Waste Management, District, Ron.
Our next meeting will be 7:00 p.m. at Mueller Civic Center, November 9th.
Okay. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Anne.
We met on October the 4th at the library at 5:00. We approved by, we're going to, we did approve later by email the draft of the 2017 National Historic Nomination. The application for detached garage at 802 Elm Street was conditionally approved unanimously pending clarification of whether the property is in historic district. If so, the commission approves the application upon motion by Lani and second by Hayden. Application for windows at 745 North River was unanimously approved. Hayden has seen from that. We discussed the application for a sign at 505 North River. No action was taken since the commission is waiting input from Mrs. Barbery about her conversations with the building owners for email. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Evans Sponge, Advisory Committee, Stana.
Our next meeting will be October 19th at 10:00.
Okay. Parks, Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development, Marty. And we may have to interrupt you.
Our next meeting will be Monday, November 6, 3:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Okay. Planning and Zoning Commission, Harley.
The next meeting will be this Wednesday, Wednesday, the 18th at 7:00 at City Hall.
Okay. Public Safety, Bob.
The next public safety meeting will be this Wednesday, City Hall, 2:00.
Okay. Public Works, Bob. In fact, before you start, let's go ahead and we'll wait just a moment here for the public hearing. I know you've got a good report there, and I need to interrupt you right, right in the middle of it, so. And the time is approaching 7:10. I would go ahead and call to order public hearing. And this public hearing is for the temporary alcoholic beverage license application for the Boys and Girls Club Wine and Reece Event to be held here on November 4th at the Mueller Civic Center. This public hearing is an opportunity for people to express their concerns or favorable comments concerning this license application. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing or seeing none from the council? Any questions, comments?
It's just a good fundraiser for the girls and boys clubs. I haven't seen a problem with it.
Okay. At this time, then, the public hearing is closed. And do we approve that at this time, Misty?
Please.
I would accept a motion then, hearing no comments concerning this temporary alcoholic beverage license, that the council would move to grant that license.
I'll make a motion for the temporary alcoholic beverage license application for the Western Hills Club for their wine and reese event on November 4 or 17 here at the 17.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we grant the temporary alcoholic beverage license. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Bob, you're on. Public Works.
Thank you. As the mayor pointed out, I've never said in 50 words what I can say in 500.
I didn't say that. For the record.
Public Works Committee met on October 10th. Mayor Cotty, Kim, Tracy, and myself were there. Had quite a list of items that we went through. Our number one favorite, the sludge to wiring system, is that its final installation and onsite training for the equipment should be provided by the end of October. Sewer backup in the private residence, we've been following that very closely. Tracy is working on designs for increasing the size of the sewer line up along Elston Avenue, and that will be brought in front of the council later on. Chipping of the brush pile at the landfill, we're still waiting on a meeting between the contractor for the biochar process. And the city has completed a memorandum of understanding. Boulder Falls construction is progressing with an expected completion date of late November. Public parking along River Streets, city crews will begin working on adding gravel and signs to the portion of River Street south of University Avenue to allow increased parking along that section of River Street. Kim will research the possibility of the Department of Natural Resources' water quality project for next year to further expand parking through the use of permeable pavers. This would be an 80-20 grant. Did I get that right, Kim? Surplus property of buildable city lots. The sale of those buildable lots is expected to be completed by November, by December. Talked about the contract position for meter reading. Request for proposal for the meter reading contract will be published in the Hot Springs Star around until October 31st. We have a double water billing at a property in Hot Springs that we've been following. The property owner requested that the city not charge them for a second water meter that wasn't active. The agreement was that the property owner would have until the end of November to install a second curb stop to help the city resume billing for the two water meters. The security fencing around the two-mile gallon water tank in Doran Road, work has begun on extending Doran Road to provide direct route to the city's two-mile gallon water tank. Conversion of city locations to solar, meeting still needs to be scheduled between the city and Gend Row to discuss the possibility of converting the following city buildings to LED lighting, the libraries, City Hall, the Miller Center, Evans Pond, City Shop. The Freedom Trail expansion is scheduled to be completed yet this fall. New business items. Kim will be working on a request for proposal to hire an engineering firm to provide a design for a cantilevered sidewalk along a portion of North River Street to coincide with the Highway 325 construction project. The city will also look at bidding for large tree removal at Ulliker Park. The next Public Works Committee meeting will be October 31st, 2:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Appreciate the concise report. A lot of things going on in Public Works. Southern Hills Economic Development, Sam has asked to be removed from that committee for personal reasons, and I've granted that request. And so, if I'm in with the council, if there's anyone interested in filling that vacancy, I would just let me know, or I will contact you. We do have a report from Southern Hills Advisory, Golf Course Advisory Committee, Stana.
We did have a meeting. The irrigation project will start March 1st because of a pipe delay. The aeration of the greens is complete, and number 17 box has been leveled. Our next meeting will be November 13.
Okay, thanks, Skylar. Volunteer Party Department, Ron.
Meeting was on 10 October, 7:00 p.m. at Hot Springs Volunteer Party Center. We discussed upcoming training for October and November. Working on the five-year plan. Discussions on fire prevention, we visited schools at the old house on the 12th and 6th Ave, which was very good. Looks like there's a lot of kids at that lot, I'm glad. That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And that takes care of the committee reports. We move on into ordinances. And again, in your package, you have the ordinance 1183. And this is an ordinance that provides for the amendment revision of Chapter 4A dealing with animals and power. And just to summarize what that is, that we are looking at for the public, it expands the ordinance to include pet, swine, and pigs. Provides some additional clarification on protecting residents from dangerous animals, particularly dogs. And then also some protection for the animals themselves if they're deemed to be a nuisance and fit the category of being, having to be put down, that would keep us from, the city from putting an animal down without cause. And Bob, I know you worked real hard on this. Is there anything that you'd like to add as far as to the council?
I'll just remind the council that in the ordinance that you're looking at, anything in blue is additions that were added by the city's attorney. Anything in red is well constructed from the ordinance, and is first looked at changes. Anything in green is changes in wording by the Public Safety Group. Since this was included in our packets, it had been brought up that there was some concern about still some of the existing language in the proposed changes. And those had to do with, it would be on page three. About halfway down in the blue section, an animal that causes a serious bodily injury to a person may be destroyed. Right from that, be destroyed. Further down on the page, last paragraph, talks about destroying said animal. And on the third page, paragraph 10, towards the bottom, it talks about maybe humanely destroyed. There is some concern that destroyed doesn't clearly identify how an animal would be put down. So, looking at that, we decided that euthanized should be, should replace any reference to maybe destroy, destroy, and destruction as appropriate. And the last paragraph on the third page, their last sentence, it's talking about the process of an animal owner asking the court to decide whether the animal should be put down or not. The last sentence says, "The judge may either confirm the proposed action by the city or make any other appropriate order regarding said animal." I'm proposing to add a sentence right after that, which is the first time the attorney served, so you can, something that we can move forward with. But right after that would be, "If the judge confirms the proposed action by the city, the animal will be humanely euthanized by a licensed veterinarian with the full cost of euthanasia to be paid by the owner of the animal."
Okay. Can you repeat that?
If the judge confirms the proposed action by the city, the animal will be humanely euthanized by a licensed veterinarian with the full cost of euthanasia to be paid by the owner of the animal.
All right. Can I bring up one other thing? All right, we're only having the hearing as if the person appealed. Am I right off top of my head? So, if the person doesn't appeal, is the city going to take the toss? Or should we have a decision about that, too?
My intent, and as I understand what the changes we tried to make, is that if the judge does not agree that the animal should be euthanized, then the city doesn't have the authority to do that.
Yeah. I'm doing this off the top of my head from memory. But if, it's still, it's up to the person to appeal.
Yes.
But if there is no appeal, then the animal can be euthanized.
What's the cost, you know? Because if we're going to be thanked for this, we probably should have landed.
That's why I felt it was important to put this statement in there, that with the full cost of euthanasia to be paid by the owner of the animal. So, the city would not be responsible for, answer your question directly. I spoke with Fall River Veterinary this morning. It depends on the weight of the animal, but, and also depends on whether the owner of the animal is going to take possession of the body, or whether it can be left to the veterinary clinic to do that. But $110 to $125 would tend to be the maximum expense, and that would be for a large animal. My specific question to them was, as far as this ordinance is concerned, I would expect it to be a dog, or a large dog, that would be the larger cost. That would be the cost for the owner. So, then I would look to the lawyer to help how we might change this, so that, my whole intent in involving this is that the city just doesn't determine an animal's, determine an animal going to be put down, like some kind of oversight, and that's how I read through it, checking what happened.
Well, one time, I think they took him out to the country and gave him to some farmer. I do remember that.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's right, if it were a vicious dog, so.
Okay, as a council.
Carol Anne had some thoughts about sections she felt needed to be enhanced a little bit.
It's under nuisances. It's the third page. Bob and I talked about this, about adding the wording, if, should we like for it to read, "The owner or keeper of any animal," that we would add, "That has been deemed to be a nuisance." Or, "Having bitten attacked, assaulted, or assisted," there can be a fine. Because if you don't add the fine, then dogs can just run loose, and there's no, no consequence. But I found something on the last page. Bob and I didn't ask you about it under, I guess this is still under that, no, it's 4A 107.50. C, "It shall be unlawful for any person or persons to permit any animal to run at large." Well, if it's unlawful, is there consequence?
We were talking a little bit about that, and Misty, can you help me out as far as the tickets or whatever the animal control officer can currently write?
Yeah, he can write. I don't know the dollar or not, so I'm sorry.
But he can write a ticket. It's unlawful, and they can be taken, okay? That's my question.
I have a question also. On B, on the second page, it says that it's unlawful for any person to keep or maintain a kennel on any residential property. I guess the word just a kennel probably needs a little more clarification. A kennel, you can keep your dog in a kennel, but I don't think that's very defined.
It's defined as a kennel.
And so, that's what I was wondering, how much are we using for that definition?
It's defined earlier in code, and so, we are only looking at changing this ordinance. We're not changing that definition, so you don't see that listed in there, but it's listed.
So, a kennel is five dogs.
Okay, so, that, outside in a structure. So, are we talking like a breeding kennel, or?
That's by the definition.
Okay.
They don't specify for breeding or keeping. Five dogs or more outside in a facility. That's how it's defined.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, good discussion, and excellent points that are being brought up. As a council, we have a couple of options that we can do. Obviously, this is the first reading, and that's why we have first readings, so that these things can be clarified and changed. We can make a motion to approve the first reading with the changes that have been suggested now, or if you would, as a council, prefer, we could make a motion to table this, have those changes added, reviewed by the attorney, and then brought back at the next council meeting for a first reading. So, I guess that's your choice as a council. How do you feel?
I'm concerned that we don't have a good enough answer to some of the stuff Bob just said, that maybe we should table it, and we could get it written later on. Because I'm not real sure if we're going to be responsible or not, because it could be a fine line there. I'm just kind of concerned. However, I mean, you added a lot there.
As far as actually adding, it would have been the, it would be the statement about humanely euthanized by veterinarian. The other places would be replacing destroyed, destroying, destruction with humanely euthanized. Those were mildly concerned with the ordinance. I understand what you are firmly saying about, there still might be some wiggle room, and if the owner doesn't appeal, then the city would go ahead and euthanize.
Which is our current process, anyway, for additions of days of handling.
Yeah. And I still feel strongly that euthanasia should be done by a licensed veterinarian at the cost to the owner. And I'm fine with making those changes. Is there anything else that anybody would?
Nuisance part, I guess, you just want to add the word fine?
I've read, no, I read it to you. You want me to read it to you again?
Yes, please. I appreciate that.
I'm adding "that has been deemed to be a nuisance."
And which one are you adding?
It's on 4A dot oh seven dot oh three oh. There's A and B. This is B, the next page, and it's the top paragraph, adding the words "After the owner or keeper of any animal," and that's where we'd add, "That has been deemed to be a nuisance." Or, "Having bitten." All we're doing is including the animal that's.
It's deceiving, because we can do on that side. The wording focuses on having bitten, attacked, assaulted, or assisted. Add this paragraph right after this.
Also, because if you look at the nuisances, we're discussing visually running a dog. It references exactly what we're adding that wording to. At the end of it, "As set forth in 4A 07.030," R.D., it references that, but then it doesn't specify that in that.
Okay, I guess what we'd like, a motion one way or the other, so that we could make a decision and continue moving on.
I'll make a motion to table the first reading, and still the changes that we discussed tonight would be added to the ordinance and brought back for a first reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we tabled this. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we tabled this first reading until the next meeting, so that the changes that were brought up tonight by the council could be, be added. Is there any further discussion?
I would just like to add, we've been talking about this for a while, it would be nice to get wrapped up and get going with it, so I would ask everyone on the council, you know, to read along last time, if the changes that we have talked about are in mind, we'll make the changes, we'll get it settled, everybody's reviewed, but it would be nice to have all the changes for a reading next time. That would be my request.
Yes, I echo that, I think that, you know, we've worked on this a long time. Bob, I do really appreciate the hard work and the effort that you put into taking all of the interests into heart from the dead owners to the pets themselves, so thank you. We do have a motion on the floor. Are there any, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of tabling this until the next meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, I would ask for a motion at this time to go into executive session for legal matters.
I'd love for you to go into executive session for legal matters.
Start with that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we go into executive session, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, 7:31. Okay, it looks like we have everyone here. The time is 7:51, we'll reconvene, uh, council session, and move on to do business. I'd accept a motion to accept item A, to approve a five-year lease agreement that you have in your package with CapFirst Equipment Financing Incorporated for 2018 Pelican Street Sweeper.
I'll make a motion to approve five-year lease agreement with CapFirst Equipment Financing for 2018 Pelican Street Sweeper.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that lease agreement, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The item B is to have a motion to surplus our 2005 Pelican Street Sweeper, and the plan is to have that surplus so that we can put that up for auction, and that people can bid on that. So I would accept a motion to surplus the current Street Sweeper.
I'll make a motion to surplus the 2005 Pelican Street Sweeper, excuse me.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we surplus the 2005 Pelican Street Sweeper, is there any discussion?
Is this going to be sold at auction, or is it going to be traded in for the new?
Uh, this will be sold at auction. And Misty, if you'll explain the details on that, we'd appreciate it.
It can be sold at auction. We've now officially surplus it, I talked to the auctioneer about the delivery of the new one, because we don't want to get rid of the old one until the new one is delivered. So it is possible to sell at ad option with the exchange taking place after we receive the new Street Sweeper, so that would probably be our recommendation. Although you don't clean a lot of streets in November and December or January, in the event that we did the one we want to keep on hand, we're holding the new one is delivered.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of surplusing the 2005 Sweeper signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Also have in your package, uh, some, uh, and I would accept a motion to approve, so that we can discuss, a approval of some flats, lots one through twenty-seven, and parcel one, a revised subdivision of Garden of Memories Track Evergreen Cemetery, and this contains all of parcel one. Misty, can, can you explain exactly what that is before we accept that motion, so that everyone completely understands?
I'll do my best to summarize. This has been an item this council has discussed in the past. This portion of the Evergreen Cemetery, parcel one and parcel two is purchased by a family and then split, it has now two families. This side is the Graff family side, they have four internments currently in this section, although it was never legally platted and plotted, so we couldn't officially sell deeds, and deeds can officially be recorded at the registered deeds office. So we created an arrangement with the Graff family to get this taken care of, so that we could legally sell the flats and record the deeds for those entered in that section of the center.
Okay, I'd accept a motion then to approve that, of this flat, as described in your packages.
I'd make a motion to approve a flat of lots one through twenty-seven and parcel one, revise the subdivision of Garden of Memories Track Evergreen Cemetery, containing all of parcel one.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this flat of cemetery lots, is there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Accept a possible motion, and so we can discuss to approve the contract 2017 dash five, a use agreement for Southern Hills Community Recreation Initiative, to use the Miller Center for youth gymnastics for November 2017 to March 2018, coinciding with the Hot Springs High School use of the facility for youth gymnastics.
I'd like to make a motion to approve contract 2017 dash five, use agreement for Southern Hills Community Recreation Initiative to use the Miller Center for youth gymnastics from November 2017 to March 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this use agreement, is there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And again, this is another way that we as a city can support youth activities in our communities, so thank you, council. We also have a motion and possible discussion to approve contract 2017 dash six, Evan's Plunge Fitness Instructor for Lori McFerr. I'd accept a motion at this time to approve that contract, you have that in your package. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Evan's Plunge Fitness Instructor contract, is there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have a question, is there any kind of certification required for her to provide this fitness class?
I believe that she, um, I'm not sure of her certifications, but she actually did it before we purchased Evan's Plunge, so she's a long-term instructor there. And I can check into your question about certifications.
If you would.
Do you have any other questions? Okay, hearing none, ask all those in favor to approve that contract for the fitness instructor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I accept a motion with an amendment to approve that 27 dash seven Airport Grazing Lease Agreement with Gary and Sharon Romi. It's been kind of a verbal agreement in the past to have this grazing contract, that the individuals renting the pasture would repair any damaged fences. And our attorney reviewed this contract and recommended that we add appropriate language concerning that it is the responsibility of the renters to repair the fences. So I would accept a motion to amend the lease to include that the attorney will add the appropriate language concerning the repair of the fences.
I'll make a motion to amend and approve the 2017 dash seven Airport Grazing Lease Agreement with Sharon and Gary Romi, with the appropriate additional language regarding fencing.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this grazing lease agreement with the amended language. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item G, a possible motion to approve the transfer of a hundred dollars from the general fund to the airport cash on hand for giving change when selling oil and window wash. There's one thing that our airport manager has done, is to make these items for sale for transit airplanes coming in. It's an opportunity to serve our airport customers better, and we need a change fund, so that's the reason for the request. I did check with Ed today, he does have a way to secure those funds at the airport office. So I'd accept a motion to approve that transfer of funds.
I'll make a motion to transfer a hundred dollars from the general fund to the airport cash on hand for giving ch- change and selling oil and window wash at the airport.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that transfer of a hundred dollars from the general fund to the airport cash on hand. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then you also have in your packages a new travel request form that would be used by all departments for travel requests. I think it's an excellent opportunity to concisely gather the information that we need and that Misty needs to present those in your packages, so that we'll have an understanding of what these travel requests are for. So I would accept a motion at this time to approve that new travel request form.
I'll make the motion to approve the new travel request form to be used by all departments for all travel.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that new travel request form, any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to resolution A, we have discussed this earlier, and we need a resolution relating to the lease with an option to purchase agreement with Capital First Equipment Financing for a Street Sweeper. I'd accept a motion to pass that resolution at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2017 dash eighteen, a resolution relating to the lease with option to purchase agreement with CapFirst Equipment Financing for a Street Sweeper.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve a resolution 2017 dash eighteen, is there any question, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on in the agenda, the finance officers report.
In the second meeting of the month, you don't have any financials sitting in markets, but I get great questions from you, any, any and all times, so please know that if you have specific questions, even when you don't have those reports, that I can answer those. We are working in the finance office on the last supplemental appropriation ordinance for 2017, that should be on the second agenda for November for the first reading. We'll have to read it twice and then pass and publish it before it can be effective, that's why it has to be done at that time. I'm also working on wage resolutions for 2018, we discussed those briefly in admin finance, we'll be reviewing those at the next meeting, and those will be first 2018 resolutions, the first meeting for 2018, and pass the wage resolutions. We're also working on policies to be updated in 2018, implementing policies for this city was very important. When I started, we did a great job getting lots of policies in place, but just like with everything, it's a good idea to look at those, make updates and changes, and we have some recommendations that come from our insurer, some that come from our employees, and some that come from council. So there are a few policies we're working on updates for in 2018, nothing drastic, we're not revamping anything, we're just making some recommended updates, and you'll get to see all those and adopt the updates, so more to come on that. The city received a donation from the Elks for a hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents, that was just cold park cash, to reimburse the city for the cost of two forty-two-foot tennis nets on the newly resurfaced tennis and basketball courts. I believe that you all got that donation acceptance form emailed to you, if you know someone from the Elks named them, they've got a lot to support our parks and we appreciate it. Just to let you all know, I have plans to be out of the office from the twentieth through the twenty-fourth of October, I'll be returning to work on the twenty-fifth. And I have only heard back from one council member so far regarding the proposal from our bond holders to refinance the Evan's Plunge Mineral Springs Sales Tax Revenue Loan. So I sent those proposals out by email, I want to hear some feedback from you, I appreciate the feedback I've gotten, if you have some specifics, please let me know. Thank you.
And thank you, Misty, and we thank you for doing your civic duty also. For those of you that don't know, Misty is serving on jury duty today and tomorrow. We do miss you, Misty. Kim, can you give us your first city administrator report?
Absolutely. First thing I wanted to make sure everybody knew is that the building and commercial offices still open, I'm wearing that hat also. After the last meeting, had a call at my home, people panicking that they would be able to get building permits. Nope, that, we're still open for business, still doing building permits, so come on down. On that note, just so that you guys get an idea of what's happening around town that might not be really visible, in the last four weeks, we've had four buildings sold and into new house, uh, new hands, three of which are historic buildings, two of which are vacant, so that's pretty exciting stuff. So you'll be seeing things happening with those buildings as new people move in, businesses are coming in. By springtime, you'll see a lot more activity on, on North River Street and in, on North, I'm sorry, on South Chicago Street. Wanted to follow up with the public works comments, we did start laying out the extension of the freedom trail today, so we should be continuing on that one this week. I'm going to let the mayor do the Boulder Falls paving. And I did want to let everybody know, you've received emails on that, but for anybody in the audience, we do have sections of the comprehensive plan available on our website at www.h s dash S D dot O R G. You go down to city departments, go to planning and ministry, there's a place there under comprehensive plan. You can click on any of, I think, eight different chapters that are already drafted out. I've had one comment so far from any of the council people, I'm expecting to hear more. It will be eventually coming to you for public hearings, but the earlier that we can get comments and information in and changing it, the easier it will be once it gets to the approval process with the council. But for anybody else listening, I, our, our idea is to get as many people's input as possible. The biggest thing that I'm worried about is that I'm forgetting something. I've gotten some really good input on grammar and punctuation, I have apparently a love affair with commas. But I, I take, I take these comments well, and I will incorporate as many things as I can. If things are maybe more controversial, I put all... If things are maybe more controversial, I put all information there, and we'll let the Planning and Zelling Commission and the council determine which way we go with that. But those are all my notes for today.
Okay, thank you, Kim. And we sure appreciate Kim being on the job. And one of the things that asked her to do is to develop an updated job description for her former position. And I was very impressed with the title that she came up with. And it's a development coordinator. And I think that really defines what we want in our code enforcement officer and is someone that is helping Hot Springs to grow and to encourage growth and building and doing it right, in the right fashion. So we'll be getting a-
George?
Yes, go ahead.
The City Journal had a very good article on Hot Springs about Kim stepping up for the city administrator. I thought it was very good.
Okay, thank you. And what I'd like to do is, we want to get this job posted. And again, looking to appoint a hiring committee to examine those who apply for our development coordinator. And I'd like from the council, Bob and Harleen. Bob, because he deals with Public Works, and Harleen, because she's on the planning and zoning oversight portion of that, I think would be good. Kim, having held the job, we know what's going on. We want to get someone from the community, some kind of, someone that's familiar with contracting and so forth, that would give that side of it.
I did talk to James Borver today. He said he'd be willing to.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and finalize that, and then I'll serve on that committee also. And like we did before, we'll bring those, our recommendations to the council for approval. But this is a very, very important post in our city. And we want to make sure that we get the right kind of person that is ready to be a development coordinator.
Will they also do the building inspection?
Absolutely.
It's not just that, but they will still perform the functions of-
But do you have a way that you're promoting development, not pushing their way?
Again, Boulder Falls is continuing to go on. Unfortunately, the batch plant was down on a nice sunny day today. We didn't get much pavement laid, but everything is covered. The second layer is probably about, I'd say about 40% complete. So we're moving on there. One of the other things that has been stalled for a long time is the Deep Lane and Sons mining contract. We do have a conference call with the FAA on Wednesday. They're doing the environmental assessment that needs to be done before we can go ahead with that. There are some questions on the contract, and we'll be getting those ironed out hopefully during that conference call.
What time is that call?
That call will be at 9 o'clock is when the- The other thing that I just again really want to encourage tonight is that we will be having state DOT representatives visit the businesses along River Street. We've heard there's been some activity with the selling of buildings. We also want to continue that project of developing the river into an attractive attraction in downtown Hot Springs. A big portion of that is getting the river cleaned up, access for pedestrians, some water features. But it also includes a cantilever sidewalk that would be a part of the 385 highway construction. And it's needed for two reasons. And first and primary is the safety aspect. If you go down River Street and you're trying to cross, and you get across to the other side where the parallel parking is, and there's a truck bearing down on you, you better scamper for the side because the lanes are quite narrow. And so that cantilever sidewalk would provide us six additional feet for traffic lanes. And we think that's an important message to get across to the state DOT. Obviously, we look at it as also an economic development. One of the ways that we can stimulate business in our downtown area is to attract people to come. And having a feature that people have access to a warm water river is vitally important. So I'm encouraging that those businesses that will be interviewed down on River Street, like Gus's Ice Cream Shop and so forth, really get that message across to DOT that we want a safe River Street area, and we want a cantilever sidewalk over the river to help enhance that as an attraction. And that said, I think we are ready for adjournment unless anyone has anything else. Can I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.